Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Council members are encouraging virtual public participation as there is limited seating in council chambers due to the number of COVID- nineteen infections in our area. All meetings will be live streamed on the city website and city YouTube channel. Our first order business is roll call. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus, Mr. O'Connor,
here.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson, Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you.
Seven members present.
And Councilman Coghill also just walked in for the record.
Thanks for joining us, Council.
Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers of the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before city council and profanity will not be permitted. Once you are called upon, please restate your name and neighborhood. For the record, you will be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Mark Noble. Early on mute.
There we go. Hi, I'm Mark Noble. That's K-N-O-B-I-L, representing the Housing Committee of the Polish Hill Civic Association. The Housing Committee would like to thank Council Member Gross for her advancing this issue and for Mary Ganim for championing inclusionary zoning. One fun fact is that from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and eighteen median sales, housing sales in Polish Hill, I know it's a small sample, but nonetheless, it tripled. It tripled. So we are in one hundred percent support of the inclusionary zoning for Polish Hill and Bloomfield.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belsuver in Homewood, Columbus, Ohio, Akra. Dana, Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate, twenty twenty-four, Global Intelligence Society dot org. February two thousand and twenty-two is African Intelligence Month. Concerns of council are Africa and public safety, among many others, public safety, P.S. And what follows continues my district-by-district response vis a vis of Africa to the, in my view, generality-rich science-for-PS position interview, nine February two thousand and twenty-two. District five, Councilor O'Connor, P.S., weakness. Citizen info intel, a minus regarding what DSSC Solutions, SCA Technologies, Gather AI, and CMU Computing Systems actually do, whether they use the Israeli government-sponsored superhack program Pegasus, if they assist in FBI national security letter, CIA spy NSA post-prism surveillance of Pittsburgh citizens, we have a right to our files, make stronger via info intel in relationship to first in Africa, Public Valley Hide, Johannesburg, South Africa, plus when it comes to blocking citizen surveillance. District seven, Councilor Gross. A weakness, minimum safeguards to protect citizens from the negative consequences of robotics row, Lawrenceville, especially IM Robotics, RE2 Robotics, and the National Robotics Research Corps. Why isn't this in Homewood? Is that racist? Get strength from info intel, from Porta Novo Benin, number one in Max in Africa, in the first Global Robotics Challenge. District eight, Councilor Strasburger, P.S., weakness, biochemical, physical council, undersight, obscurantist information and intelligence to citizens regarding whether mobile drone and static camera surveillance of the University of Pittsburgh and CMU complexes is up and in what ways, what upgrades are in place to suppress the release of virological, bacterial, and fungal research organisms. I am the Global Intelligence Society solution, as I have said this for ten years, provide all Pittsburghers with biohazard, chemical, bio, and radiological hazard suits, and also provide anti-camera and antimicrobial assistance.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Good morning. Shady trees, not shady deals in Voneer. We, the people of Voneer, have significant investment into our properties. We stand to lose significant value financially and quality of life reduction. The largest investment that the average American will make is their home. Our biggest assets are being threatened. This is why we, as a community, have expressed significant concern about the potential development of Voneer School into anything other than a green space. We already had a valuable school stolen from our community. We deserve a valuable green space to replace it. The Pennsylvania Constitution states, under political powers, that all power is inherent in the people, and all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness. Negligent infliction of emotional distress and blockbusting are being perpetrated by those who oppose our community. Real damages are occurring to the Voneer community. I have no doubt that this controversy was a contributing factor to the demise of my husband. The PPS created this controversy against we, the property owners of Voneer. My husband did his duty to promote the peace, safety, and happiness of the people he served. Will you, as elected public servants, do your duty to help the people of Voneer? My husband, Michael, was duty-bound his entire adult life. He completed his mission on earth well. He is now one of the watchers and helping in the spiritual realm. He is still a force with us. A neighbor wrote, "I think one of the best ways we will honor him is to keep fighting for Voneer and be kind to our neighbors. We will commit to that, I promise." Shady trees, not shady deals in Voneer. Michael Mullen, Memorial Green Space.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Christina Howe.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Christina Howe. I'm Executive Director of Bloomfield Development Corporation. I'm here to speak in favor of inclusionary zoning expansion into Bloomfield and Polish Hill. I won't take up very much time. I just wanted to share that since the legislation became pending, we have now secured a commitment from a developer to include at least nineteen affordable rental units at sixty percent AMI, as well as the developer committing to accept housing choice vouchers so that we increase the amount or lower the amount that a person would need to spend to live in these apartments. So already, this pending legislation has had a huge impact on our neighborhood. I know nineteen units doesn't sound like a lot, but that's nineteen people or families who will be able to stay close to work and not have to have a car, be able to stay close to their health care in their social networks, and it's just already so impactful for our neighborhood. So that's all I wanted to say. Just thank you so much for all the time and attention that you've all spent on inclusionary zoning over the years, and Lawrenceville United and Corporation for paving the way for us to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Curtis Richardson. Currently on mute. There you go.
Hello. How are you doing? I'm Curtis Richardson.
We can hear you. Please begin.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello. Yeah, hi. My name is Curtis Richardson. I'm just here to attend.
Are you providing public comments, sir?
Um, yeah, I can, sure, but I'm really here. This is my first time attending a meeting. I'm really here to, you know, pretty much get familiar, you understand, you know, soak up some information about what's going on in the community, city web, basically, pretty much.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you for joining us. Our next registered speaker is Ikuhana Howe Malkina.
Greetings and good day. My title is Ikuhana Howe Malkina. I am the Grand Inca of the Airqua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People, also known as Indians or Indigenous People. I would like to pay homage to a woman of virtue, who was a cement mason by trade and skill, and worked for a local union here in Pittsburgh. She was a woman of excellence, worked on and helped renovate the Smith built street bridge, the veteran street bridge, and also helped build the Allegheny County Jail, to name a few. And she worked on a many, many, many highways and byways all throughout Allegheny County. As a little Tatooine, I watched her work hard and provide for her lineage in a male-dominated field, but she held her own and garnered her coworkers' respect by shattering their preconceived notions that a woman did not belong in construction, let alone a copper-colored woman of hue and skin tone. Of course, she had to face racism. I am in support of the current legislation and our funding that is going to the Pittsburgh Public Schools to give marginalized people the opportunity to learn a skill set, to go on to society, and to positively impact their communities. I would like to remind city council of the starry dicey devices that exist in favor of Indigenous people. We have never ceded land to foreigners who occupy our land. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Pittsburgh and its subsidiaries should act in good faith and observance to the Indians, towards Indians and Indigenous people of America. For we are the Anque Home Way. We are the road to No Sunni. In the Constitution, in Article One, Section Two, Clause Three, states, "And excluding Indians not taxed." Now is the time to act in good faith towards Indians. Thank you, City Council, for listening to us always with honor, respect, and due diligence. We pay honor and tribute to my mother, Wanda Jean. Thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone here with us in chambers today? Please come forward, provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You will also be given three minutes.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. Katie were Mercer's building. Yesterday, when Mr. Mike came, I had made an offhand remark to him. We had a heated conversation. As I realized, I thought he was coming to speak here because he was going to let him speak longer than what he should have, which I know. But I want to take and apologize to Mr. Mike, to Mark Brentley, and especially Mr. Roderickus, who used to bring his young boys to city council with. I brought my grandchildren, and one, his son is now second year of medical. All right. I'm saying this, I am really upset because I look at gents, when you call on the phone, you can't see what they're doing here. But if you come down here and get a proclamation, you don't even stay and listen to the citizen. You get your gift and run out. All of you, if you come down here, you already got your glory. You need to stay and listen to us because you don't know what's happening if you're not watching city council. Okay, then I had the lady today, because they, the old people are watching. She said, "I was half asleep, and I heard that Brown had sued." And she said, "Oh, what has Yvonne done now?" And finally, it was Carmen. Thank you, Carmen. Thank you, and all of the community thanks you. I have you know, we went to a restaurant, me and Mr. Miller, and someone says, "City Council." A man came when he's bringing his food. He said, "What?" And he got to screaming about, "You just want to make eighty-eight thousand dollars a year." He said that you have so much, so many degrees. He was fussing. I mean, this man was really, and that was a white man. It wasn't even a black man. Do you understand that? We're fussing because you got robotics in Ms. Gross's thing, and we got dogs. You spent two million dollars for dogs in Homewood, where a woman is saying she getting ready to get put out, and you won't even answer. Burgess, the dog lover. And you know what? Mr. Mike said that they're taking away the reading of the books. That's Dr. Dial. He's running your libraries. Dr. Dial, that one with the smiling face that sometimes tell lies, he says he fights for the children, but he don't, won't open it up for the children. And you, the lawyer, sitting here, you think you're smart when he has said, "Yeah, Ms. Singh said, 'Well, I have to say amend it.'" You're trying to play tricks to say that you just can change it anytime you want. No, why do you make the rules? And you, lawyer, you sitting here talking while we talking too. All against, and she's right, need to be done. Every one of you, even you, Ms. Smith, need to go.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers with us today, either in person and/or line? Seeing none, that moves us on to our Standing Committee's agenda. Just let the record reflect that Councilman Wilson, Councilman Burgess, and Councilwoman Gross are also with us today. That takes us to our first committee of the day, which is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. We have one new paper, Bill ninety-five.
Bill ninety-five, resolution establishing the Pittsburgh Affordable Housing Implementation and Finance Committee.
Motion to approve. Second. Any discussion?
Sure. If I can. To the members of council. As you know. Let me start off, I guess, with the big picture. So I say it clearly. I believe that every citizen, every resident deserves and should be safe and healthy. I believe that every community should be prosperous and resilient, and I believe that every family deserves income and wealth, everybody. When I began in two thousand and fifteen, I believe, talking about a city for all, what that really meant was that, and my Christian faith teaches me, that in order to make that happen, that everybody has safety and are healthy, and that every community is prosperous, and that every family has wealth, that there has to be an investment in low and moderate income people and the communities in which they live. And so I have spent most of my career trying to make that happen, not just for them, but because I believe that's the first step in blessing the whole city, that we are uniquely joined together, and what helps one helps all. Secondly, in order to make communities more strengthened and more resilient, in the time that I've been on council, I've learned that in order to rebuild, especially Black communities, you have to do them with multiple interventions. Yes, we need better schools. Yes, we need better jobs. Yes, we need more safety. But the key to it, in many ways, is housing. We passed a number of legislation of housing being a human right. We have legislation talking about an affordable housing impact statement. And so I have been last, I guess, my whole time on council, laser-like focused on how can we increase the number, now, let me say it differently, because Councilman Cross reminds me that said something right. How do we increase the number of units for everybody, right, at the level you can afford? So if you're wealthy, you should have options for the house you want to live in. If you're middle class, you should have options for where you want to live in. And if you're low income, you should have options, and all the options should be clean, affordable, and decent housing. In Black communities particularly, we have to do these multiple interventions at scale at the same time, but we do know housing has to always be one of the interventions. And if you don't give people clean, decent, safe, affordable housing, then the rest of the interventions will not work. If you give them great schools, they're coming home to live in squalor in gang-infested, drug-infested neighborhoods. It won't work. So we've learned that housing has to be an essential part. Okay, let me get to the bill now. Councilman Lavelle and I have spent our time together on council. I think, together, if you take our record together, we have participated and overseen more affordable housing development than any other person still left in city government. I think that's probably right. You know, we have, we have, we have spent, you know, time building thousands of units at this point. So when I was Chair of the Housing Authority for a number of years, I used to meet with the Chair of the Board of the URA monthly. It was an informal process, but we met monthly to coordinate activity because the Housing Authority has resources, the URA has resources, and in fact, the PWSA has resources, and now we have a land bank, they have resources. But all of that has to be coordinated, right, so that when we go and say that we want to put housing in a place, everything's coordinated. Second thing is, and Councilman Lavelle and I have done this privately, we didn't talk about it publicly, but he and I have been trying to find new funding streams. We went and met with the URA, with the administration, to look at affordable housing bond. We've went to Columbus and looked at the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is private money. They have two hundred and fifty million dollars of private dollars in a revolving loan fund for housing for their city and their county. And so this is actually a very simple piece of legislation. What it does is it puts all the people who are involved in affordable housing in one space so they can together investigate processes that will lead to more resources financing for affordable housing and quicken its implementation, right? It is a working committee, which we do somewhat informally intact in my projects in my district. I do this informally, right? If there's a project in my council district, I have all these entities meet with me regularly, and I kind of quarterback the development. But there's no one doing it across the city. Now, City Planning is about to release its updated housing sort of impact statement, right? And what they're going to suggest, and I have a sense of it, they're going to say that we need this sort of citywide goals and the citywide comprehensive planning. But even when you have that, you need some group that are the tacticians, that are the practitioners that say, "Okay, let's see what funding streams are available and what resources we can put together so that we can put more housing in Sheridan or more housing in the North Sat." And so what this really does is it just creates a space where council, the mayor, the Housing Authority, the URA, the land bank, all of them and more, if you need it, sits down and begins to vet these solutions on a regular basis. Because in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, I mean, the Affordable Housing Bond, that Councilman Lavelle and I talked about, when we talked about it, it was being discussed. When we stopped talking about it, it was no longer being discussed. There was no entity that looked at it and looked at the rates and looked at the payment plan and looked at some vehicle. And so I know about the Affordable Housing Trust. I know kind of how it works. I've talked to cities to have it, but we need some entity that's looking at these national solutions and looking at best practices and looking at the resources available from federal, state, and local sources so that we can increase housing. And so I've talked to the URA, the Housing Authority, I've talked to everybody about it, so it's not a surprise. It's really a coordinating role of, it doesn't take away from anybody, but it helps coordinate what we've been doing informally. It creates sort of a role for them to come together and to collaboratively create more money and more opportunity for financing and implementation of affordable housing. And the last thing is, and this is something I think I want council to keep in mind, because of how our economy is growing in Pittsburgh, affordable housing is going to be a very different conversation, right? When you look at workforce housing, at eighty percent of AMI, you're looking at two, you're looking at families with two working people with really middle-class income that are going to qualify for affordable housing. And so, you know, because of just what's going on in our economy in Pittsburgh, affordable housing, especially workforce housing, those numbers are going up. And so there's going to be a need for us to diversify the housing market in our city so we can keep the people who are here and grow. So it is, that's the overview of it. The members, the members are laid out. It's the mayor, the chief economic development officers, two to four members of council, city planning, the Housing Authority, the URA, the land bank, and then the committee itself can put other members on as it needs. So it's, and it's really, it codifies something we should have been doing all along, that we do occasionally, but it creates some muscle for it to do it on a regular basis.
Thank you for that long explanation, detailed explanation, but I do want to say, I've always had some concerns when we form these committees, and I don't understand why it's not a task force or something with less teeth. I think that these are ways to avoid city council. I don't think that they're a way to make us part of anything. I think it's a way to do things that city council can't always keep an eye on. We have enough of those, we have enough problems with that, you know, currently. I want to be supportive, but I don't understand why this can't be done under the current structure, why the URA can't host these meetings and these collaborative efforts. And so I'm just, today, I'm going to either abstain if we vote on it today, but really like to take the time to have like a meeting and maybe, maybe even hold for a public hearing or a post-agenda to better understand why these other groups or entities cannot perform these tasks currently. I mean, to me, and the other thing I think we need to do is look at the Realty Transfer Tax and evaluate that. We said we would evaluate that, and it's been years, and we haven't revisited that. And I'm wondering now if the effectiveness, if we're still having this problem with affordable housing, and now we're expected to possibly take on Wilkinsburg that needs additional housing help, I'm really concerned that this is not the, this was not the way to do it in the first place, and that maybe we need to revisit that and reevaluate that. And honestly, Realtors came to us at the time and said they have better ways, and I think everybody's, you know, closed their minds to whatever their suggestions are, and they might actually have some real solutions. I just think it's a better, a bigger, broader conversation in terms of housing, the Realty Transfer Tax, possible solutions, Wilkinsburg, student housing, how much of this is student housing that we're needing, how much are we helping the universities, how much are they helping themselves, how much are they helping Pittsburgh? I think there's a lot of conversations that have to happen. And so today, if we vote, I'll abstain. Otherwise, I would appreciate if you would hold for at least a week till we start having some discussions.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. So I share some of Councilwoman Smith's concerns about creating a new task force that takes the conversation off of this table, and we should be having it at the table. And then I would like to also mention that I've been saying for quite some time that eventually this love, the price pressures that I was experiencing, my district has been experiencing and advocating about, would come to other districts as well. So, you know, some districts in the city, one district especially has already at a high price point, it didn't see escalation, but the rest of the city is really experiencing both rent and housing price pressures. But the rest of the city is really experiencing both rent and housing price pressures. And so we've been, I have, I just want to give first some credit to the community leaders in District Seven. And in the last eight years, while we've been seeing this price appreciation, they didn't only advocate for inclusionary zoning. They also created the city's first land trust. That was a spin out from the Lawrenceville Corporation, which is creating permanently affordable housing on 99-year leases with covenants that keep those units at some escalation, a low escalation so that the property owners can build wealth and build equity. But when they sell, they don't sell at the real estate speculator profit level. They just sit, sell out at a reasonable level so that the next person can buy in an affordable unit. And that we've seen that model spread now across the city and into other boroughs as well. So the City of Bridges Land Trust started off as the Lawrenceville Land Trust. They also partnered with entities like Action Housing and other developers to create free and deeply affordable, entirely affordable buildings at Morningside School, at Penn and Matilda, and now we're about, just had a ribbon cutting at the Doughboy. And so these are units that are affordable at a 30% AMI in the heart of what we are reminded by the Supreme Court of the United States, Neighborhoods of Opportunity. They're on bus lines, they're walking distance from groceries, they're near schools, churches, very proximate to downtown with lots of job opportunities. And we need to keep pushing. So I just want to remind this table that it is now really a problem of every neighborhood. But it's especially important that we keep fighting to include affordability in the resource neighborhoods and not just the under-resourced neighborhoods. So we have to do both. It's going to be a, I think, a, a big conversation about what kinds of dwelling units people need at different parts of their life stage. Sometimes there are areas of the city that don't have family-sized units, they need family-sized units. That was one of the discussions we had where, of course, if you're building an affordable building, for example, at Penn and Matilda, the Action Housing was building it with a preference for veterans. But they did their research and I just want to give them credit there. They realized that, so Western Pennsylvania has a high degree of veterans experiencing homelessness. We have a high degree of armed services participation. But that we also had a high degree of women veterans. And so they made, and women veterans tend to have children and when they have affordability needs. And so they included some family-sized units in that development. That's 45 units at the corner of Penn and Matilda. And so that's part of the, the struggle that I think the, again, leadership, community leadership has really been advancing. That, you know, there was a time in Pittsburgh when we thought all of our affordable housing was senior housing, right? And they were almost synonymous. That was 20 years ago, when you're talking about affordable housing, it was like, if you're talking about building senior housing, you're talking about building affordable housing. But those, you know, the demographics of the city and the demographics of people who are, as Councilwoman Burgess said, you know, working families very, very likely demand a different kind of dwelling unit. But also this imperative to, I think, have a balance of rental, but also some more opportunity than we have now for ownership and building ownership. And we haven't talked enough about alternative models that have been championed in Western Pennsylvania from 100 years ago, like limited equity housing co-ops, where you can buy in with, that's what it means. If you don't have a lot of equity already, you can still get started in ownership. And it's a collaborative ownership model. And we had dozens of them. We have some of them still operating in council districts. But it's a, it's, it's like we've forgotten these models and how to do them. And I really would like to see us work on recovering those lost knowledge bases so that we can create more options for people. I feel that's what's really lacking. So I also am worried about kind of like, what is the timeline? Who's actually going to be on it? What are the priorities going to be for this task force? I really think we should walk through that before we do final passage. All right, I appreciate that. There's to, so that we can all talk more about how it's being tasked. And I haven't heard any feedback from the members of the administration that are named and kind of what the other entities are feeling. So I would like to hear that too. So thank you for letting me give a little speech there because it's been, it's definitely something that I, I just wanted to acknowledge that the neighborhoods that I represent have really been working on in earnest and have a great deal of skill and expertise in. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I wouldn't disagree with anything I've heard today, both the concerns and the, the need for this and the work that the community organizations are doing. But I guess my question is about this, how this, as it often is, how this interacts with some of our other commissions, groups, task forces, and agencies. So I guess when it comes to other groups that have been formed, you know, how will this, what do you foresee? And I know that probably a lot is still up in the air. But I guess to the bill sponsors, what do you foresee that, how do you foresee this interacting with the Housing Opportunity Fund group? With, I guess, other organ, other task forces or commissions that work on maybe not housing specifically, but work on housing adjacent issues? And then, you know, I'm really glad that it's called out, that it will consider and, and, and focus on, you know, access, accessibility and access to public transit. Well, then, how will this be an outward-facing group that maybe if it doesn't have, it doesn't have to be a huge group, but how will it interact with, say, those at Port Authority who are thinking about transit-oriented development? How will it work with our schools, our public, private, and parochial schools, childcare facilities, food justice folks, when we're talking about grocery stores, other amenities, age-friendly Greater Pittsburgh AARP? When all of those are considerations, how will this group not be a, an inward-looking group that, that just bounces around their own ideas rather than, you know, seeking ideas from outside? My question, if there's opportunity for conversation. Yes, please.
So two things. One, to answer a question that was not asked about this table. Development is 70% land. 70% of development is land control, right? And by virtue, huh? 70%, 70% of development is land control. And the Charter gives land control exclusively to this body. We are the entities over the land mass of our city. And so there's no way to get around council that comes to development because we control the land. Second of all, so what I, what I do, I'm not say, you know, I'm, I'm old. So I do the same thing, the same way all the time. And it comes, Mr. Cal, Mr. Cal, can I laugh about it? But what I do is I say, okay, here's an idea that I'm thinking. And so let's work together. Let me kind of lay the idea on the table. What I've seen, and I, I'll ask, I'll ask Mr. Lavell to kind of chime in. What I've seen is this occurs accidentally, accidentally, and, and periodically, right? That accidentally, a group will come together, usually around a project, and say, you know, there's a project in my district. Like I had this meeting, at this, at a meeting like this yesterday, right? I have these meetings where we're working on a project in my district, right? And so we bring all the resources together and say, well, how we get this project done? And then occasionally, we'll say, we know it'd be nice if we had another $20 million or we had $200 million. And we all kind of agree, but then no one kind of works on it, right? It kind of gets lost in the, in the atmosphere. And so my thinking is, if you had a, a standard group that were working on this issue with their staff, you would, you would, you would. So I'm not, I have not thought out how it interfaces, right? In my mind, this is an internal group that's really laser-like focused on, on resources and implementation. So that's kind of, in my thinking, that's kind of the, the, what I think they do. This, and it's, it seems to me that the chief economic officer would be the person who leads this group. This would be really a group that he is the, the chair of and leads it and kind of, and we talked about this with the last economic officer, right? And we all kind of agreed it was a good idea, but just it doesn't get done. And I think we're leaving resources on the table because we're too often only project-driven, but we don't take some time to say, okay, where are these kind of, you know, where is these resource? Can we do a bond? Can we really do a trust? What, what does that look like? And, and there's no one assigned to make sure that work doesn't get full, because we're all busy, right? We all got stuff to do. So what I hope to do is to say, here's an idea. And I'll work with you. I don't, I just not, I'm not, I don't have a timeframe. So it can be two months. I, I spent a year and a half, the first, the first reporting bill for the police on their annual report, it took me 18 months to craft, negotiating with the police. So I'm not, you know, once I, I don't have a timeframe, I'm willing to work with every member of council. I just know practically this, someone has to make sure this task gets done. This, and it's not, it doesn't get done. It, it, right now it gets done accidentally. I'm trying to find a way to encourage it to get done on some regular basis. That makes, does that answer your question? So I don't have the answers. It's the how everything puts together. And I'm willing to amend, to change, to alter, to do reporting, to put timelines. But this is my kind of best idea of how we can move forward.
Thank you for that. It's helpful to, to understand what you think the scope should be in your mind, that it's, you know, mostly resources and implementation. And even so, I, I would hope that it's not too siloed, that it does still have outward-facing and interaction with the, the groups that I just mentioned, but also, you know, the inherent knowledge of the community organizations. That's what I'm going to gross. A lot of wisdom there as well. And we also, I'm also acknowledging that we have a comprehensive plan that our city planning department and others will be working on and how affordable housing and an affordable housing plan and guidebook for developers. It's into this, fits into that, and there's a lot happening. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. But that answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members for discussion?
If not, my two cents is, for me, more than anything else, this is a conversation of resources, right? So prior to this meeting, I was on it, I was on a similar coordinated meeting at nine o'clock discussing Housing and Hill, our choice application. And part of what came up was the fact that in order to support the first phase of development, the city is probably going to need to put in about $4 million a year for the next five years to support that. If we do that, that's $4 million a year that's coming out of our coffers just to support the first phase of housing, which is a couple hundred units or so. The reality is, we don't have at the city enough dollars to actually have the impact on housing across the city that we actually need. The $10 million that we send to the Housing Opportunity Fund is a drop in the bucket compared to what we actually need in order to do all the things that Councilwoman Gross outlined. And part of it is, I believe, if we're really going to do the, the for-sale housing, affordable for-sale housing, that's really a rehab conversation, not a new construction conversation. You can't build anything for less than $400,000. And then you would need to put $300,000 worth of subsidy into it to make it affordable. And to rehab most structures around the city now, you're talking about $150,000 worth of spending. And so where are those dollars coming from? And I think Reverend Burgess is right. Shortly after we did the Housing Opportunity Fund, you all recall, I said then, I thought we should take a bond out against it, use it to pay back the bond. And we went and met with PNC Bank and they told us we couldn't for a number of reasons. We weren't primed to be able to do that. So we waited, about a year and a half went past, went back to them. This is right before the pandemic. Had a meeting where they said, you, you actually could do a bond now. And here's the reasons why. Mainly because we had proven that we could actually spend the money, that right now there's more projects in the pipeline, whether it's through the land trust, which we just approved at the URA board meeting last week to do, I forget how many units, maybe it was like seven or eight, yeah, Hazelwood. But we literally have more projects than we have resources to be able to have the impact that we need. And so for me, someone leading the charge every week, every day in to think through, where are the resources going to come from, makes a lot of sense. Because ever since the last conversation we had about the bond, URA was there, Mayor's Office was there, I believe, that conversation hasn't gone anywhere because no one's quarterbacking it. So I think for that reason, that sole reason, this makes some sense. Now, how it ends up ultimately being crafted, that's, Councilman Burgess can work with members to figure that part out. But I think the idea is warranted. Councilman, what is your pleasure?
One or two. How long do you want it to, to, let's, I'll motion for a two-week hold and then I'll work with all members of council to come back with something that we can, we can all, at least most of us can agree on.
Second. Discussion, two-week hold, Councilwoman Gross?
Like one more thing I wanted to add in. It's not, I appreciate that. Councilwoman Smith mentioned revisiting the real estate transfer tax. And we had that conversation just a few days ago. Each of us were not comfortable with that source of revenue for worrying that sooner or later the biggest entities would figure out a way around it. And we were told, no, 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 we've closed that state loophole. So some of us were at the table and remember that from that conversation, right? And it's not true. I am, I have a screenshot of the real estate portal for the county. The cork factory sold again on September 14th, 2021. Sale date, August 27th, 2021, sale price, zero. So when you, then there's zero dollar sale, there's no real estate transfer tax on zero, is there? So there are loopholes again. And, and that's, so I've requested in, in, for the Wilkinsburg Committee, and we need to research parcels and their ownership and their sales. And I am requesting from the county that we are given access to the backend of the real estate portal so that we can do these kinds of queries and reports and analyses. And I'm awaiting access to that data and I intend to continue to dig into these issues. So I, I couldn't resist throwing that in. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Since, since, since you went down that road, what I'll also just briefly say is, in our city, set assessments of homes or homes are absolutely over-assessed. Wealthier homes are absolutely under-assessed. That's another conversation involves the county. But that's also another conversation around where our, our dollars are coming from.
One quick, we, we actually introduced legislation and passed it that froze the cities challenging the assessments. So it's not just a, we decided. And so we know with an absolute certainty, I don't talk about this much, but we know with an absolute certainty that the wealthiest homeowners in Pittsburgh are absolutely not paying their fair share of property taxes. We know that with a certainty. And we as a city decided not to challenge their assessments. So we wouldn't want them, we didn't want to force them to pay their fair share. The only reason I mention that is we had a bridge that just fell down. We just had a bridge to fall down. We got 20 more that can fall down any day. And we're going to have to have an uncomfortable conversation about how we generate more resource. I'll talk about that in a minute. How we're going to generate more resources to put in to this aging and failing infrastructure.
I'm sorry, can you just expand on the, on what you just said, on the, on the freezing of assessment?
We, the, I, I believe it's Gilman's bill. We were challenging, the law department was challenging the low assessment of upper-income houses in the city of Pittsburgh and being successful. They would go to court and say that these, these properties are under-assessed, right? And the court would say, that's right. And they would change their assessment. We passed a law stopping that process of having the law department challenge the assessment of these upper-income houses because we thought that.
Just to, I mean, that was, it was, it was, it's not a freeze, it's a, it's a delay of two years and then they can be challenged.
Do these two years?
Yeah, and it also doesn't apply to anything over a house over $500,000 because that's the school board's responsibility, the school district's responsibility too. And they don't have that law in effect. So it's really, it's houses under $500,000.
But I don't.
That was an administrative policy.
Yes, it was administrative policy, we stopped doing it.
Got it. Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were talking about the same thing. Okay, got it.
How, I don't remember, I know we're not doing it. It's further hurt nice to talk about this. We stopped doing it for whatever reason. And so what we do, how we do it, and then that may, that property taxes. I have this conversation now. We're going to have two choices. We're going to have two choices. We're either going to raise property taxes, or we're going to find a new, a new funding stream. There is no third choice. We're going to have to either, because the bridges and the roads and the rest of infrastructure has to be improved, and we have to have local money to put the first fruits in it.
Thank you. So all those in favor of a two-week hold, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it will be held two weeks. We need a motion to approve the invoices. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, invoices are approved. We need a motion to approve the P cards.
Second.
None, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Councilman O'Connor. One deferred paper, Bill thirty-two.
Bill thirty-two, ordinance amending and supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinance, Title I, Administrative Article III, Organization, Chapter one sixteen, Department of Public Safety, by adding a new Section one sixteen seventeen, Regulation of Pedestrian Stops by Officers of Bureau or Police.
I want to ask again for a two-week hold. I'm waiting. Our public safety director is new, and I told them that would wait for them to give me their work together. So let's at least start off the two-week hold. It may be longer.
Motion to hold two weeks.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it will be held two weeks. That takes us to Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Clark Hill. One supplemental paper, Bill one twenty-one.
Bill one twenty-one, Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to establish a joint Pittsburgh Infrastructure Task Force to oversee the equitable distribution of infrastructure funds.
Motion to approve a brief discussion.
Second.
Councilman Clark Hill?
I appreciate your, your work in this, Rev. I didn't support the amendment yesterday for a couple of reasons. You know, I feel like we have enough task forces and responsibilities that we're taking on with Wilkinsburg and other projects that we have in the pipeline. And I felt it conflicted with Councilman O'Connor's bill. And just as a point of inquiry, I thought that we were not to have two pieces of legislation on the same day, on the same bill. Is there somebody can bring me on with that?
We're not supposed to have conflicting bills on the table at the same time? I, my read, these are not conflicting bills. They do two, they do two solely different things.
I don't know if it reads conflicting. Maybe that was wrong. I just thought.
Both are true.
Okay. No, 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 go ahead.
Live through this. Councilman, you asking for?
Sure. Madam Clark, can you help me on with that?
So, as he mentioned, like they're doing two different things. I don't think, we can't have two of the same bill with the same language on the table at the same time. It's what our rules of council says. And I don't think we have that.
Okay, so you don't have that.
One's a task force, one's a committee. There's a difference.
Oh, maybe if I can explain it.
Sure.
I think if you think about this in two phases, it will make sense because that's how I look at it. So let me kind of talk about it, and then I'll explain at least in my mind how it works. Our infrastructure is failing in our country. The American Society of Civil Engineers gave us a C minus nationally. Our public roadways are in poor or mediocre condition. We have structurally deficient bridges, and we have aging power grids. Historically, infrastructure, construction, and maintenance have been used to promote inequality and racial segregation. Pete Buttigieg, the present Transportation Secretary, said explicitly, there is racism physically built in some of our highways. In Pittsburgh, when I was young, I was newborn, and in Pittsburgh, ninety-five in the Lower Hill, ninety-five acres were demolished, eight thousand mostly African-American people, and four hundred mostly African-American business was forcibly relocated because of infrastructure development to build the civic arena.
My family was one of those families.
And so we have this crisis. We have the President of the United States who passed the Infrastructure and Jobs Act. It is not just about bridges and roads, as I think Councilwoman, Councilwoman Gross reminds us, but it talks about all the other parts of infrastructure. Republicans say that infrastructure is just roads and highways. That's a Republican thought. But we Democrats talk about to rebuild bridges and rails, to expand access to clean drinking water, to ensure every American has, has access to high-speed internet, tackle the climate crisis, advance environmental justice, and invest in, and invest in communities that too often are left behind. In fact, President Biden said he wants forty percent of the impact of this bill to be in communities that have been historically disinvested in. So forty percent of the money, the resources are supposed to be used equitably, right? We got blessed. It just by, we got blessed twice, right? In Pittsburgh, the Fern Hollow Bridge collapsed. Don't, I've been, I've been trying not to talk about it. A friend of my family, who I've known for fifty years, was on that bridge. This is why I don't talk about it. God spared her life and the life of those people. God did that. We did not. Then the president happened to be here. He saw it and said, we're going to rebuild it, and he gave us thirty million dollars to rebuild. Had he not been here on that day, who knows where that money would have came from? So we had this miracle. Now, I've been on council for, this is my fifteenth year on council. I've not had one conversation about a bridge falling down before. No one came to me and said, Rev, bridges are going to fall down. No one told me that they, we're in this danger, but I'm responsible. This is our responsibility. We are responsible for the city. We own a hundred or so bridges. We are responsible for those bridges. They had to be repaired. We, the council, is responsible for it. Now, I think there are at least, so I think that we have lots of, we have lots of commissions. The Planning Commission, the Civil Service Commission, the Gender Equity Commission, HIV Commission. I don't have a problem with any commission that makes recommendations. And if we pass and create another commission, it will make recommendations. Great, good, fine. I have some concern about how that is populated, but no problem with that. But once they make a recommendation, it comes to us. And we need to develop right now, bridge, a bridge fell. I have a bridge, the Llama Bridge, where there's a net under it because to keep the bridge chunks from hitting people driving down Washington Boulevard, right? I have a bridge right now. That Fern Hollow was in my district too. There's one completely in my district, and it's falling down. So there are three things that have to happen, and we have to do it. One, we have to devise an infrastructure improvement plan. We need to consciously, because we at council is, the capital budget is ours. This will go in the capital budget, and we are responsible for it. So we have to devise an infrastructure improvement plan, specific to projects and infrastructure that we have to approve and we have to implement. Council has to do that. Second of all, we have to raise additional capital. The reason that a lot of these projects don't get done is because they have to be shovel-ready for state and federal resources. And to make them shovel-ready, there's no money in the federal and state level to do that. So we have to take local money to get these projects shovel-ready so they will be competitive for state and federal resources. Though Erica has a bridge in her district that needs to be rebuilt. Third of all, once we have a capital plan, and once we have additional capital, then someone has to oversee those projects and make sure they're done timely and appropriate. And again, that's our responsibility. All right? But the president said, Pete Buttigieg said, and I'm going to say, that this has to be done with equity as a priority. We passed in the last few years racism of the public health crisis, that black communities matter, and that we would have investment priorities for black communities. There's ten commitments of racial equity. All of it passed as statements of what we, as a city, believed in, and all of them talk about making equity a priority. And so, so then, what my bill attempts to do is replicate, and we may disagree on the process, but to replicate the same process we did with the A, 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 A R, or A
ARP dollars.
ARP dollars, right? Same thing. That, whatever commission, whatever else we do, we get, we get back these reports. But once it comes to us, it becomes councils, and we need a process to do this. And so my view is, we create this the same way, a task force made up of the council and the mayor, and we get these recommendations. We begin to craft this plan. We use, because only three of us, four of us can meet together, we negotiate with them, we negotiate with the body so that we, on the front end, have input to what the project should be, what the funding stream should be, prior to it hitting this table. Then we get a second bite of the apple. We negotiate with the administration, but then it comes to council. And then as a group, we negotiate what the plan looks like in terms of equity. So what I'm trying to do functionally is to, A, make sure it's equitable, B, empower council to be responsible. I don't want to wait. I don't want to wait. I don't, I don't want, I don't want to wait for a report from, here's what I'm going to give you today, and I'll do it later, but let me give you right now. Remember Johnny Carson, he used to do Karnak? I don't know, maybe I'm, I'm aging myself. You don't know anything about this right now.
Heard somebody in the audience.
Johnny Carson was, was, it was a host of a tight show. He used to do a skit called Karnak.
I vaguely remember.
Vaguely remember that. We do Karnak, right? He was a mentalist, right? And he would, he's a soothsayer. He would put, he put a, he put a paper up to his, his, his temple. And I used to love the tight show, and he'd say Karnak says. So he would then predict what was on the paper. So without the, the, the committee commission, I'm going to tell you what the commission is going to report. Number one, our bridges and infrastructure is failing. We have at least twenty bridges that are endangered, and all of them are bad. Number two, we don't have enough money to put, to fund them. Number three, we have to raise more money to fix the bridges, and we have to do it now. I don't want to wait six months. I don't want to wait five months. Let's, we already know what to do. Let's go do this. So what my idea is, let's just go start doing it. Let's start talking about how to raise the money. Let's go talk, talking about how to, how, what taxes to increase. None of that, that, that's not the commission's responsibility. That's council's responsibility. That's our role. It's our role to be leaders. We now, and it has to be done equitably, but this is, the only people can do the things I'm saying is council and the administration. No commission, no unelected group of people should be talking to us about raising taxes. No unelected group of people should be talking about putting together a capital, a capital plan in the, in the capital budget. Now, I'm willing to, 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 to compromise. I'm not, but I'm, I'm, as I always do, this is how we get the ARP money, and informally, this is how council does the budget every year. So I'm just replicating a process that we use over and over again. But because we had a bridge fall down, and we have other bridges that may fall down tomorrow, I think we should start this right now. That's what I think.
Here you.
Councilman Clark Hill, you said the floor.
Okay, so.
To respond to you.
I'll just add a few things in, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah. First of all, equity with infrastructure, I agree with you, hundred percent. Equity with bridges are equity with bridges. The worst bridge, the one that has horse report gets fixed first, no matter where it's at, as far as my concern goes. I was concerned about the task force. Number one, I was very comfortable with what Councilman O'Connor put forth, you know, with engineers. And the way I read it was, we're going to get eyes on these bridges. Okay, the twenty-two, at least that we have rated poorly. And then get, you know, we have engineers, we have tradespeople going out and looking those. I didn't know the task force was going to be introduced yesterday. I understand the reason for it. I would prefer to hold it so we don't have to think in two different directions. I would much rather see Councilman O'Connor adjust his, make amendments is to make other council people happy, is to, you know, the language in it. But, so, so it's not that I don't support the task force. I just, you know, thought we're dealing with the same subject, and we have two separate bills here, and I'd rather not think it, do separate things at once. And the task force, you know, when I look at Cory's bill with engineers and tradespeople on it and professionals, and the task force is just made up of three leadership in the mayor's office. So, so I wasn't quite sure where we're going with it, or who's going to be involved with it. I am the chair of NOMI and Public Works, so I thought I would be a likely person to be, sit there. But, but be that as it may, I, I really can't support it today. You know, I wish we could hold it, or, you know, talk about it at a later date. That's it.
Thank you. Council President Smith?
Thank you. So I just want to be clear. It's four people, and then council president gets to pick a person who I would pick, the chair of NOMI, to serve on there.
President, I just want to say, I, I don't, I don't look to serve on that. I, I, I don't, I just feel like it's not the right thing to do at this time. So I appreciate that.
I'm not saying, you are definitely, I'm saying that's what I would probably do.
Okay, okay.
But, and I think, I think there's a lot of members that do want to serve if they, if they go to. So I just want, I have a concern with the, I've said this before with commissions, period. I mean, when we move them forward, I, I know that sometimes they're necessary, but I do have a concern with, with informing commissions that might not come, things may not come through council. I think it's always a way of circumventing council. And so, and then we can't discuss it here at the table. And that's where sometimes some issues arise. So for me, I always feel a little bit uncomfortable with that. But I did talk to Councilman O'Connor. I've spoken with Councilwoman Strasburger, and I'm feeling a little bit more comfortable. But I, I, this piece, knowing that it's definitely going to come back to council, and that there'll be no misunderstanding, it will definitely be here. I feel a little bit, it makes me have a little bit reassurance. So I, I'll, I'll probably vote for both if this one goes through today. If it doesn't, I won't vote for both.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. I appreciate it. So I, we have both in front of us, even though we haven't read the O'Connor piece and its amendment. But I'm asking, like Steph is actually bringing me the print copy. I've been trying to read it on my phone. I actually just wanted to take a moment to say, I really need my paper text files back again.
Amen, amen.
Is this the whole? I thought these were just the related ones. Oh, thank you so much. So I was just requesting another printout because I couldn't get it straight in front of me. This is just a relate.
Here's hers.
Okay. Bruce stole mine, so I apologize. I didn't know that anybody had them. I could, there's, I had this other green packet here. And so it's hard to talk about this one without talking about Councilman O'Connor. So I know we haven't read it yet. And what I was advocating to Mr. O'Connor last night was that his commission should prioritize bridges now. And the first draft had very broad language, just said the word infrastructure. And again, as, as Councilman Burgess pointed out, that could be broadband, that could be sewer lines, that could be water lines, it could be just regular road paving. And I think the urgency that this council wants to see and the public wants to see is us talking about bridges now and figuring out a plan. So I'm supportive for, to an amendment that is in the next bill, which prioritizes bridges, but also, as Councilman O'Connor later, it still says including but not limited to, and it has a bunch of other stuff in it that I would like to see taken out. And then it be more like a task force kind of thing where it reports back quickly to council, so then we can get moving and take action. Find the funding, hire the people, do the stuff. And not that it just goes away and talks a lot. That's what I do not want to see. And I, I think what the public does not, would not feel encouraged by. And then, so secondly, this equitable distribution of infrastructure funds in Councilman Burgess's bill is very broad and does talk a lot about a variety kinds of infrastructure and says prioritizing investments in community-based violence and crime prevention. You might call that social infrastructure. Am I reading this wrong? I have the right bill, correct?
That's, that's simply repeating principles that we already voted for, so it's not new. That's part of the Black Pittsburgh matters. So I'm simply restating in this bill principles the city has already agreed to.
Well, I feel, I'm going to read it.
Sure.
Prioritizing investments in community and economic development projects in black communities, prioritizing investments in capacity building of local community-based and faith-based organizations in black communities, prioritizing investments that result in stakeholder collaboration and resource coordination in black communities. Prioritizing investments that result in stakeholder collaboration and resource coordination in black communities. Prioritize investments in workforce development. Minority entrepreneurship, minority-owned businesses that build and rehabilitate housing with minority contractors established in or serving in black communities. So in some respects, this is very different. What I'm trying to figure out is the part where you're actually talking about heart infrastructure. So what, uh, is that in section two? Uh, the capital budget types expenditures, specifically investigate increased infrastructure funding, including any potential funds to be allocated to the city of Pittsburgh. Uh, it, I find that, I feel like this could just use a little bit also.
Tightening up.
Tightening up. Fair enough. Okay, so maybe we should also do that. But again, I'm with you. I don't want to wait. I do want this council to talk about what we want from whom, when. So, um, I think in, in both of these pieces, that's really what it's our job to do. Let's make some decisions so that we can get things done sooner. All right. So, thank you. That's all I want to say.
I found your replacement council call.
I'd like to call the director of DOMI to, to the discussion.
We would just, for the record, just give your name and title, please.
Good morning. Kim Lucas, acting director for the city's Department of Mobility and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Director. I have expressed my concern at the last day in the committee meeting about uh, the time and effort that will go into bills like this. I know we're not reading all bills right now, but I'll just, um, talk about this, um, again. So I'm concerned about the time and effort uh, that goes into this with our engineers and if we have the staff capacity. You don't have to answer that question right now. So we're, we got a task force bill and we had a committee bill. Can you please explain, or, you know, maybe we can set up next time or something if, if there's not a full concise answer right now. Can you just explain the process for how money comes in, we designate? I mean, you could probably answer this question. The, the task force is talking about, the committee is talking about, can we just start with you? And just ask you how we prioritize the money that we have to fix bridges. We have multiple poor, poor bridges. Um, we need to take a step back and realize that just because the bridge is poor, poorly rated, it's not going to fall down. So how are we going about, you know, with the money we have? What's, what's our, what's our process now?
You're right. That is, there's a lot there. There are a lot of different sources of money. There's a lot of different sources of information about our bridges. You know, I described last week at this meeting that the majority of the city's own bridges are a part of the national bridge inspection standard requirement. And so they are required to be inspected every two years and that is a contract, you know, that exists. That's with PENDOT and the city, and we have a lot of good information through that. There is, um, there is language that is used in inspection reports that without understanding exactly why that terminology is used, it can maybe sound more severe than our understanding from a technical perspective. And so that's the sort of, um, human touch that I think any additional new reporting would require from the department would be interpretation. Um, and, and conveyance of those resources that do exist and that are used to prioritize investment. But as we've heard today, there are a lot of needs and the investments that we have may not cover. So we do have to go with the ones that we have information about the urgency. In the last few years within the city, you have seen, for example, West Ohio Bridge was closed because of concerns. There are lands on other bridges that have been closed. And so we have different strategies for trying to make sure that when there are issues that we are aware of because of those inspections, that we take the appropriate measures to either reduce capacity of that infrastructure or close it completely. Um, if we do not have the ability to immediately maintain.
Thank you. What would it take to improve your process?
People and the money for those people to write these contracts, get through the reimbursement agreement, and then the money to actually do the work. So, you know, there are some opportunities that are in place. We do have many of our bridges that I think have been referred to earlier. They're on plans for investment in the next, you know, few years. They're within the state's, um, tip. They're within, um, other resources. But the reality is we need more. We have more bridges than we have.
We need more what?
Sorry. We need more money to perform the work that is recommended. And we need more people to be able to manage that money because it takes people to design. It takes people to write and manage contractors. It takes people to monitor and update the data and the reporting and analyze it. And so those are the resources that we would benefit from.
So, but until we get the money, you're monitoring the bridges until, you know, it becomes a point of, certainty that we should close a bridge or close one lane of traffic to ensure the safety of people that travel across that bridge. Right?
We monitor and inspect our bridges regularly. And yes, we make those decisions based on the findings from those inspections.
And we're relying on the inspections and engineers.
The ex, the technical experts.
Yeah. So just like we're in this pandemic, we're relying on scientists to tell us when we should get vaccinated, what we should do, um, to minimize risk of infection. We also have experts in your department that are doing the same thing. So I just want to be mindful as we move forward that we're continually asking the department what they need. I want to be supportive of what's going on here. I just wanted to state my position that we just need to keep realizing the, the needs at the department. Because now I believe that we have the expertise, professionals, we need the money and we need, um, to, uh, trust their expertise. So, uh, thanks.
Thank you. Any other members for discussion? So in my mind, you sort of have two things. One is, I think Councilwoman Gross, you're right. We should probably tighten up Reverend Burgess's bill. But in my mind, it's very specific to all things go well, we're going to have an infusion of resources from the federal government. And we have to determine how to best spend those dollars. This bill should be doing that. How to spend what's coming. And in addition to that, how to get the additional resources you need for DOMI to be able to do their job, right? This bill should do that. This other bill that we haven't, it's not on the table yet. For all intents and purposes, is going to give us the post Gazette report. What I also believe in Councilwoman Strasburger, and I've had this conversation, is that this other committee, the real work is going to go find the resources necessary on hand to address the immediate concern that you put on the table, which is sort of your bridges, your roads, your failing infrastructure that needs addressed. Um, so I think two, I think both can be compatible and be, and be worked through at, on the table. I think both can, can work alongside one another. Um, and so my suggestion would be maybe we hold it a week, work with the councilmen, tighten it up so that it, it isn't going to do exactly what we want it to do, um, and then pass it. That would be my, my personal recommendation. I, I see hands. We'll go to second round. Um, so that's just my thinking. Second round.
First round.
Oh, you too? I'm sorry. I apologize.
Sorry. And you got one first. I, it does, it can be second, whatever. But, um, I, I just wholeheartedly agree about the going after the, the funding piece. Because regardless of who's doing it, we have to get our arms in its council. And however we decide to do it, along with the administration and staff, we, I mean, there will be some dollars flowing to us from the federal government, but unless we go after it, we will not get those funds. Most of those federal infrastructure dollar, or infrastructure bill dollars will be competitive and will be competing against other cities and states. So we do have to, um, figure out some mechanism and have a set of people who are really focused on setting that plan so that we can, um, go after those dollars and win those dollars. In addition to the ones that are just going to flow to us naturally.
Thank you. Second round. Councilwoman Gross, followed by Councilwoman Wilson.
I want to make that point as well. So that these, the, those federal funds are in DC and will flow to other cities if we don't have our priorities clear. And this body needs to make decisions, as I said before, about what those priorities are so that we can identify which of those pots in DC that we apply for and try to get. Um, and so it behooves us to do this and prioritize this work now. Um, because those rules and regulations are being promulgated now. Those grant deadlines will be starting to be generated soon. And there are other groups organizing and going after those funds, even in our own region. Um, and so we need to be ready to be clear about what types of projects we're going to do. And so I think that another element that we haven't mentioned is not just having the personnel in our org chart who can manage projects. But we may need to even beef up personnel in the city organization that can help solicit these funds. Right? And apply for these funds from, it's, it's really a full-time job to go after federal funds and then manage the reporting on them and manage just even the grants management parts. And we do have grants management, uh, but this is an unusual, an extra moment. So I'd like us, um, also to be talking about that. Not just, not today, but we need to be talking about that very soon.
Councilwoman Wilson.
I just wanted to, um, I just want to bring up the, um, the word decide because a lot of the, in this conversation, some people were using the word like, and then we'll decide what infrastructure gets done. I want to be careful of, like, who decides? Cause, you know, obviously I want to point to the experts, the engineers, the inspectors who have, you know, to rely on. I mean, as far as I know, you know, who? I asked the director of DOMI, uh, who has been making decision on which, like, which bridge gets done next?
Um, I think that, I don't know, there's probably more to talk about with that. There's a lot of variables that go into it, eligibility of which bridges, the type of funding that's available, the type of, um, recommended repair also unlocks different eligibility. So there are a lot of variables that go into making that decision. But that, at this time, you know, is a combination of the department where we make recommendations to council on an annual basis for specific projects. So we recommend for budget for certain projects that we've identified based on condition, based on, um, equity, based on location, things like that. Um, so it's a, it's a, it's a blended effort, you know? We ask, sometimes we receive. I do want to point out just briefly that our department does have a number of plans. And I think that the work that we're talking about here is akin to something like this. I'm holding up for those who can't see it's our steps plan that was published in May of 2018, that prioritized the 800 approximately step, step, sets of steps within the city. Recognizing that we've got 800 sets of steps, they have different amounts of utilization. They are in different states in terms of their condition. And we need to prioritize them based on those sorts of variables. And we were able to take a strategic look at those. And what came out of this was a five-year, uh, recommendation for steps investment. Um, bridges have something similar, not necessarily, you know, a beautifully bounded document. But in, with the PENDOT reporting systems and things of that nature that those inspection reports go into, we have a lot of that information available to us and we do utilize it and, um, strategize using it similarly. So I did want to highlight, because I don't think we've done that yet in this forum, that this is the work that the department does. And we do, um, appreciate insight and visibility into that work because we recognize that a lot of it happens, you know, upstairs and not down here in front of the public. And so I just wanted to make sure that that was known. Um, we also have a 2021 strategic action agenda that has an asset management section to it. Um, and I can make this available to anybody who is interested. It was born out of the 2070 vision plan process, which is available on our website. And, um, we have an asset management section that specifically calls out things like number one key action, work with OMB to develop a strategy for assessing and regularly inspecting most critical structures, including short span and non-vehicular bridges, et cetera. So I just wanted to call out that a lot of this work that we're talking about is done. And some of the questions about what resources are needed to actually elevate this work and be able to fulfill it is, I think, a great point that I've heard raised today.
Well, thanks for bringing that to the table. Cause, uh, you know, I think it's important because a lot of the work is done and we need to get that out again, talk about it, explain the process of how we do things here. Um, so thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you, Councilman Cock Hill.
I'll be quick. Uh, Madam President, I want to retract my statement. I think of the task forces about securing funds. I think I could be very helpful there. Um, maybe I misinterpreted it, but if it's about lobbying or soliciting funds, I very much would be, like to be a part of that. And once we clean up the, you know, and, and Councilwoman Gross too. I'm not trying to push her out. So anyway, uh, and, and you know, for me, this, this whole conversation is about the 22 bridges that we have that are rated poorly. I saw Councilwoman Strasburger on the news the other day with a four by four post supporting a steel beam. And I thought, ah, as, as quickly as we can get professional eyes on some of these bridges, other than relying on the studies and who we hire to do that, I'm talking immediately. And when I see something like that, um, you know, four by four aluminized posts holding up steel frame bridges, uh, you know, red flags go up with me. So I think Councilman O'Connor with the engineers and the, the people that he's trying to bring to the table, spending will always come back to us. So, you know, I'm, I'm not real concerned as to what they're going to recommend because, you know, we always have to approve this spending. So, okay, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. So Councilman Burgess, what is your?
So, um, one, one, one week. Um, I appreciate, for me? Um, I, I'll hold for one week and I'll, I'll work with Councilwoman Gross and all members to tighten up the language. Um, and, um, but I, I, I must say this again. Thank you very much, DOMI Director, for saying what I kind of already knew, but you said it out loud. We've already done the research. We don't need research. We need money and decisions. That's what we need. Motion to hold one week.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do you oppose? It will be held one week. That takes us to Bill, Councilwoman Strasburger. What is your pleasure? Are you wishing to read these separately or together?
Separately, please.
Uh, you can do it together. It's fine. I don't.
Prefer, I prefer them not to be together. My S is not, because I'm one of them I have serious issue with. One of them I don't. I'd prefer to have that conversation separately.
Okay.
What is the will of the sponsor?
I'm fine with separate if the, if the.
Okay. Let's do them separately. Bill 77.
Bill 77, ordinance amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative Article Three. Organization, Chapter 118, Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, by adding 11803, Infrastructure Asset Reporting.
Motion.
Your motion.
Sorry.
Fact, motioned and seconded. Any discussion?
Uh, yeah, sure. Um, so on this bill, uh, there is an amendment. Uh, it's amendment for both bills. So, uh, motion to amend.
Second.
Uh, the discussion on the amendment will be the same for the next bill. It just specifies bridges, tunnels, roadways, landslides. Um, the amendment for the next bill for the commission will add the same thing, only it will have them come back to council and report two times a year at this point, possibly going to quarterly. Let's see how the first couple rounds of meetings go with the commission. But with regards to this bill, this bill will focus on transparency. Um, you know, we're hearing from the public. Obviously we understand, you know, a lot of ratings and the DOMI has this information, but it's not easily accessible to residents. Um, and I think when we start talking about the conditions our bridges are in and that law has already amended this bill that we did last week. And I want to thank Councilwoman Strasburger for doing that last week, as well as Councilman Cog Hill for his cosponsorship support, as well as Councilwoman Gross for those two specific amendments that I just added. Um, the transparency that we're going to see is to add this to our dashboard system so that everybody knows what condition they're in, where they are, when they're going to be inspected, everything that the general public has been asking us about over the last couple of weeks since uh, the bridge had collapsed. Um, the Department of Mobility has mentioned that they The Department of Mobility has mentioned that they need additional funding for this, which I think is great. And the mayor's office, who is in charge of that department, has already committed to, once these bills go through, looking at funding to add those specific support systems to that department. So we're all on the right page here. I think everybody wants transparency with our bridges and tunnels and other major infrastructure that DOMI goes out and inspects. So once that's passed, and talking with the administration, who again, is in charge of DOMI, they have acknowledged that there is support that they will find in the budget to, to do what DOMI is talking about. So I think overall, this is a win for everybody. It's a win for transparency, and it's a win for moving our infrastructure forward. So thank everybody for their support, and I'm looking forward to moving this bill forward.
Thank you. Still on the amendment, Councilman Burgess?
I have a question. So practically, I call this the nightmare scenario. We're going to, to the public, list that we are fail, our infrastructure is failing dramatically. That's what we're going to do. Now, we're going to do that at a time. And I heard about representing the public. As councilpeople, we have a dual responsibility. I want to remind you of our dual responsibility. We are not just representatives of the public. Once we are elected, we have a fiduciary, we are fiduciary officers of the municipal corporation. We are also responsible for the city itself. I asked the law department to come here today. Are we currently being sued?
Could you introduce yourself for the, here, use my. I just want to be clear, he's here for our parliamentarians, so people know.
Are we being sued by this? Are we being sued?
Anthony Bylin, Assistant City Solicitor. For discussions of pending claims against the law department, it would be our advice that we either recess into executive session, or the council makes a motion to request an opinion from the law department.
Are we currently being sued? Can you say yes or no?
I would not, I do not want to speak to pending claims.
So we are currently being sued. More lawsuits are coming. We're going to now put something in the public that will compromise our position and will be inconsistent. We will, if we do this, I want to make it very clear that we're doing, we are, we are, we are, we are not fulfilling our role as fiduciary officers of the municipal corporation. We are, in actuality, both inviting and promoting both current and possible future litigation against the municipal corporation. This is legislative, my practice. We should not be doing this. This, we should do this maybe afterwards, maybe a year from now, but right now, the city's being sued for this exact reason, the exact same information, and we should not be doing this today. I'm willing, I'm willing to have that, and I'm sure if you want to have executive session, I'm sure the law department will tell you the same thing I'm telling you. We should not be doing this.
Order.
Can I answer that question?
Hold on, Councilman.
Okay.
Councilman Kraus wants to make a point, ask for a point of order.
Yeah, thank you. So I, I think as fiduciary agents for this city, we take the advice of our solicitor, and we enter an executive session to discuss this matter. I'll motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No.
One in opposition?
It's the responsible thing to.
Can I, can I, before we go into executive session, could I at least explain?
No, because.
I'm going to be against the law or anything like that.
Unfortunately, let's do, in executive session, he made a priority motion. It's been voted, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I believe I'm allowed to comment if I abstain.
No.
No.
We're now recessed to go into executive session. We will now resume our standing committee agenda, coming out of, after meeting with our solicitor and having executive session. For the record, the purpose of our executive session was to consult with our attorney or other professional advisor regarding information or strategy in connection with litigation or with issues of which identifiable complaints are expected to be filed as it relates to Bill 77. With that, Bill 77 is still on the, open on the table, and we're still on the amendment.
Motion to hold one week.
Second.
No, we need to pass the amendment, Councilman.
Motion to hold one week. What's the point of passing an amendment if law has to reveal it?
Then we have to retract the amendment.
Oh, okay, sorry, okay. Motion to approve.
Councilwoman O'Connor made the motion to.
Motion to, motion to approve, sorry. I didn't know. Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is amended.
Motion to hold for a legal opinion.
Let the bill sponsor make the motion, please.
Council, Councilman O'Connor?
Motion to hold for a legal opinion from the law department.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will be held for a legal opinion. That moves us to Bill 78.
Bill 78 ordinance amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative Article Nine, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities, by adding Chapter 179 H, Commission on Infrastructure Assets Reporting and Investment.
Councilman?
It's not my committee.
Oh, I think it's my committee. Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Yes. So can I make a motion to amend?
Second.
The amendment was in discussion with Councilwoman Gross to be more specific on what the committee is going to look at. So bridges, tunnels, roadways, landslides, and then also have them report back to council two times a year.
Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Councilman O'Connor, for taking my concerns and putting them in this language, that this commission should be bringing its feedback to council and to the public, and that we prioritize the, the major infrastructure, that there's not only concerns from the public about, but that there's opportunity in Washington DC for federal funding right now, right? And so we need these, this information so that we can have our public conversations and make decisions about them. I am still uncomfortable that it says such as, but not limited to, but I'm comfortable passing that today. But what I, what I don't want to see myself is that this becomes a commission that is constantly meandering around in its mission, that is talking about types of projects that it has not been tasked to do by this body, such as broadband or social infrastructure like childcare, and because the, the word infrastructure is just too broad for me. And so I still don't like the phrase such as, but not limited to, because I think that empowers the commission to go anywhere they want to go in subject matter. And I would prefer it stay on task, that is, this body tasks it with. So I don't know if there's will at the table here to just strike that phrase such as, but not limited to, which is just between the commas. And then if we did that, it would read, to advise on best practices for both short and long-term investment in the upkeep and improvement of major city maintained infrastructure assets. You can keep the such as, bridges, tunnels, major roadways. And I see this phrase, infrastructure affected by or at risk of being affected by landslides. But I think we could be okay with that for now, so long as we're sure that the commission is staying on task. And, and I bring that up because it has, and the membership, I'd like to read that section as well. The, the representatives on the commission are proposed to be, one representative of city council, to be recommended by the city council president and communicated to the mayor, one representative of the mayor, one representative of the city controller, one representative of the office of management and budget, two representatives of DOMI, one representative of DPW, one representative of the Department of Public Safety, one representative of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections, two representatives of organized labor.
Who all report to the mayor, I just want to make sure that's.
Two representatives of the construction industry, and four at-large representatives as determined by the mayor. And I would be more comfortable with more subject matter experts. Those, those representatives may or may not be subject matter experts of bridges, tunnels, major roadways, and/or infrastructure affected by, at risk of affected by landslides, right? So while that might actually be a really good set of people for finding money, then we will have that tasked to different groups with finding money. So I, I kind of feel that there's still a little bit of blurred mission here in this commission. So I'm grateful for these amendments here. Perhaps we also continue to clarify, so that we, we get the results that we've been talking about during this entire meeting, setting some priorities, making some decisions, tasking it out, building out the operating budget with the people who can manage these projects, as well as building out the operating budget with people who can go after the money for the projects that this council table identifies as priority, so.
So, sorry, do you want me to approve your crossing out of the amendment? Did you make that motion?
There's will at the table, I would like to motion to amend. Can I motion to amend? How does that work? We're discussing this amendment.
Discussing this amendment.
That I can, we can.
Yes, you can amend.
Draft at the table. And there are other places that are mainly concerned about this section, which is under purpose and duties that I mentioned. So I think grammatically, it makes sense to just strike the words, but not limited to, and the comma that follows. So, keeps the such as, but.
So motion to remove the words but not limited to, including the comma.
Correct.
Second.
Need discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Your amendment has been amended. We're still on the newly amended version. Councilman Burgess?
Thank you.
So I'm going to recommend that we also hold this to make the two bills compatible. My problem with this bill is in its membership. I am, I am, there, we just talked about, at least I talked about, how President Biden talked about the infrastructure bill and how it is supposed to be used equitably. How President Biden did an executive order, said that 40% of the benefits of all the, of all of the infrastructure should be equitable. Yet in this piece of legislation, there's not one single word of equity or diversity. And, and this is what most troubling, look at the membership. You have two representatives of organized labor, two representatives, the only people named, right? Everybody else is governmental people, two representatives of organized labor, two representatives of the construction industry. Now, organized labor are my friends. I've been to their parties, but there's not African-Americans there. Both these two groups are underrepresented in terms of African-American and women. So we, we set up this membership, we give preference to what we know are going to probably be four white men. There's no, we don't name the African-American Chamber of Commerce, we don't name the African-American engineering firms, we don't name African-Americans that are participating. So we should do one of two things. We either should strike out anybody, so that, you know, the mayor can name whoever he thinks for the commission, or let's go back and let's make this diverse and equitable. If you're going to name people, don't name a group of people and then leave out the majority, no, leave out the entirety of the African-American community. I'm going to suggest to you, that's a little insulting. It was, it is, it's a little insulting. This is not 1957, where you can exclude African-Americans and we don't see it in broad daylight. This is, this, 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 this is a slap in the face to us. If you're going to name people, then we want to be named too. We want, what, what they say about diversity, I think the Brookings Institute says the best. We want equity at the table when decisions are made, we want equity at the table when, when the money is put out, and we want equity at the table when the money, when, when the companies get this. And this bill has no mention of equity or women in tech. It has no mention of either equity and diversity. I'd rather hold a week, as, as I think, I talked to Councilwoman Strasburger yesterday, I'm going to work with them, but we need to make, we cannot pass this bill this way without any mention of equity and diversity, and yet give, give priority to a group of people for whatever reason we're giving them preference to. That, that's not fair.
Thank you. Any other member?
Can I just talk about the actual bill? I didn't get to do that yet.
Well, we're, we're still on the amendment.
Oh, okay. I mean, I, I can speak and, you know, obviously happy to amend by Tuesday if we need to clarify, but I have a commitment, and the mayor's office is committed to making this board very diverse as well. I think, you know, these are actual, these individuals that will be there will talk about all of the issues that we're talking about, and also they're experts in this field. So we talked about DOMI needing help and support. This commission will help DOMI to do that. They are very understaffed, we all know that. This will allow experts in those fields to be at the table, to help us with recommendations. All of a sudden, there's an emergency and we need an engineer, that's what we're looking for, to be on this board, to give their advice and help us. And I fully agree to make an amendment if it needs to be written. I thought we already had legislation in the past that things had to be equitable, but if we have to put a line in there somewhere and in a membership, I will look at it by Tuesday, and that, I'm perfectly fine with accommodating that. But the overall bill is great, because we bring people that are going to volunteer their time to come to the table and talk to us about engineering, about details, about other things that happened at the state level that DOMI is not aware of, that we can use their resources to ensure that our future infrastructure, as well as our existing infrastructure, gets the best practices. And this is something that is needed. It should have been done years ago, and this is something that, you know, I think is, is great that we're talking about it. But I think moving forward, we can look and speak with other members who need amendments. Councilwoman Gross called me last night, happy to amend this morning, hearing about this from Reverend Burgess right now, happy to amend by Tuesday. And I just want to thank everybody for their support and know that, you know, the mayor's office is fully committed to a great board that brings everybody to the table, because infrastructure is about everybody, and it's about everybody's safety, and improving the safety of everybody in the city is really important. So thank you, I'm ready to move forward with the amendment. And then if we need to amend and talk to members about what that language looks like by Tuesday, happy to do so.
So still on the amendment, Council President?
I just want to say, I think that I hear what Reverend Burgess is saying, but I also know that our mayor is committed to, you know, making sure that we have a diverse city and diversity in every sense. So I, I'm comfortable with this, as long as we're, you know, working together over the next week on making sure if there's any final amendments, we have, we put them in together, working with him. And I want to thank Councilman O'Connor for working with us and Councilman Burgess. I know you see things differently, but I think at the end, we're going to have something that we can all be supportive of. So I want to thank you both.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment, second round, Councilman Burgess?
So I'm, I'm willing to work. What he said is not in the bill, though. None of the things he said is in this bill. It doesn't specify engineers, it doesn't specify technical experts, and we should not have to rely on the first African mayor, African-American mayor, because this will outlive the mayor. Maybe four years from now, eight years from now, we won't have an African-American mayor. And so when we write legislation, that's why I am a stickler, to put diversity in the front end, equity in the front end. Right now, I know for sure that Ed Gany, our mayor, will make whatever he does diverse and equitable. I have no doubt about that. But he will not be mayor for life, and this commission will live on beyond Ed Gany. So we should write it in such a way to ensure equity and diversity is baked in, so whoever the mayor is and whoever council is, that's, that's what we promised to do. We say it, and everything, every time, we will embed. We said, and everything, every time, we will embed equity and diversity and everything. And infrastructure on the federal level was designed explicitly to promote equity and diversity. There's no way we should write a committee or a commission on infrastructure that doesn't have equity and diversity embedded in it. And I'm going to do that, but that's what this needs. And, and if you want to put experts on it, fine. It doesn't say experts. It says a representative. There's no, there, there's nothing on here that talks about their qualifications or their expertise. It's leave it up to some other group. I'm saying, put, whatever you want to make it to be, let's put it into legislation, let's tighten it up. My advice is, let's hold it a week, work on this together like we're going to do the other so that the, the two pieces are complementary and seamless and pass them together. That's my advice.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The bill is amended. Any further, any discussion on the bill as amended? If not, I would simply, I agree with Councilman Burgess that we should be more specific, and I think Councilman Gross mentioned it as well, around who we actually want on the membership. So as opposed to simply saying two representatives of the construction industry, I'd rather specify and say explicitly, we're going to go get a structural engineer, right? That's what they do. And so I think two representatives of organized labor, I think we should be a little more specific about what that actually looks like because that's very broad. And I'm certainly willing to work with the councilmen to, to do that.
Can I just ask, were you, were you going to work on this over the next week?
Yeah.
So, I mean, as long as we have something for next Tuesday before final vote, then I'm comfortable.
I'm willing to work to get something for Tuesday. I would also think it makes sense as we held Reverend Burgess's bill a week to tighten it up, to maybe hold this one a week to tighten it up so that they're actually companion bills and that they function and, and they function well together. That would be my recommendation.
They, they do two different things, we can make it.
The bills are two, yeah, they serve two functions, but they should be able to color, not, not collaborate, play off of one another.
Complementary.
Complementary, thank you, that was the word.
I'm willing to do that.
So currently, we have a motion to approve.
Motion to hold for one week.
Well, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
No.
Oppose? Sue in opposition, the bill will be held for one.
Abstain.
One, one abstention, it will be held for one week. That moves us to our new papers, Bill eighty-six.
Bill eighty-six, resolution amending resolution number three oh three entitled, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to provide funding for the West Penn Playground Reconstruction Project to accept the grant and authorize necessary expenditures.
Motion to approve. Question, seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Bill receives affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus, one deferred paper, Bill forty-five.
Bill forty-five, resolution providing that the city enter into a memorandum of an agreement and/or contracts with the Corporation for National and Community Service for the purpose of obtaining Americor Vista members to work with staff from city departments on strategic projects and research for a sum not to exceed sixty thousand dollars over three years and for the payment of costs thereof.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Question, seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Bill is recommended. That moves us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. Our first deferred paper is Bill seventeen oh seven.
Bill seventeen oh seven, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine Zoning Article One, Section nine oh two oh three, zoning map and amending Article Three, overlay zoning district chapter nine oh seven, development overlay districts nine oh seven oh four eight, to expand the boundaries of the inclusionary overlay district.
Motion to hold for cable cast public hearing and I'll defer to Councilwoman Gross if you have some, some comments.
Thank you, second, and thank you. So, you know, we, we've discussed inclusionary zoning here before. I want to thank the residents who showed up to testify, the council many times, who showed up to testify at the planning commission. It was a, a, I, I won't discuss much because we still need to hold for our own public hearing. But this is the expansion to include both Bloomfield and Polish Hill into the existing overlay, which was based on the Lawrenceville overlay. So just a reminder, on the way the planning department brought it back to us was very clever. So first, we had an interim planning overlay district for Lawrenceville. And in making it permanent, they also allowed neighborhoods to be able to adopt, to join that overlay, even if they don't have contingencies. Bloomfield and Polish Hill do, and I think that's a reflection on the market pressures that are also spreading out from Lawrenceville in a way. And we talked about them spreading to other neighborhoods. But it is possible for a neighborhood to, or any footprint really, boundary that this council wants to specify, to also be added into the overlay, no matter where it is in the city. So again, an overlay does not change the underlying zoning that exists, but adds an extra layer of requirements on top of it, so it's an overlay. But looking forward to hearing more from citizens at the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. A quick question for you. One of the callers this morning, maybe Ms. Howe, mentioned a specific project that this is going to affect that now will have nineteen units of rural housing. You know what project that is?
We.
If not, you can tell me offline.
Sure, no, it's basically the same developers who were doing the Shakespeare Shady Side purchased the very large site at the bottom of the Bloomfield Bridge. The Sure Save site, no longer Sure Save.
Oh.
Yeah. It's one of those Pittsburgh things. It's like that was, the Sure Save used to be, which is now, since they, that owner of that grocery store, you know, wanted to retire and was sitting on a very expensive piece of real estate. He ended up, it was going on for years that he wanted to sell. There was other developers who were going to purchase it and then they backed out because of community desire for affordability. A number of years ago, I sat through a many-hour community meeting with four hundred residents. There was over three hundred residents signed in with their address in Bloomfield, being very clear that they wanted affordability at that site. So it's zoned L N C, it's underlying base zoning, which will stay the same, but they're proposing, you know, somewhere in the ballpark of two hundred luxury units, building up several floors and building up for the whole, you know, it's got a very large surface parking lot, it's been there for many decades. So it's a, I can't remember the exact acreage, maybe, you know, half an acre, I, I would guess. Yeah.
Thank you. So all those in favor of holding for the public hearing, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It will be held for cable cast public hearing. Bill sixty-four.
Bill sixty-four, resolution amending resolution number eight eighty-six, entitled, resolution adopting and approving the twenty twenty-two capital budget, the twenty twenty-two C D B G program, and the twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-seven capital improvement program by reducing C D B G personnel by sixty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and increasing C D B G administration by sixty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Question, seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Bill is recommended, Bill sixty-five.
Bill sixty-five, resolution amending resolution number eight sixty-three entitled, adopting and approving the twenty nineteen C D B G program by transferring remaining funds from the James Street Step Reconstruction Project to the North Side Christian Hill Center, seventy-six thousand dollars in traffic calming, fourteen thousand two hundred twenty dollars and fifty-four cents.
Motion to hold for one week?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Can you oppose? It will be held one week. That takes us to new papers, Bill eighty-eight.
Bill eighty-eight, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine Zoning Article One, Section nine oh two oh three zoning map by changing from R one A H, residential single unit attached identity to L N C, local neighborhood commercial, a portion of one parcel in Allegheny County Block and Lot System Ninth Ward.
Motion to approve, or I'm sorry, motion to hold for cable cast public hearing.
That can, who's the ninth one?
Huh?
That's the big site, this is that site.
That's that, yeah. Sorry. All those in favor, hold for cable cast public hearing, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It will be held. Urban Recreation Committee chaired by Councilman Burgess, one new paper, Bill ninety-three.
Bill ninety-three, ordinance amending a supplement in the Pittsburgh City Code title for public places and properties, Article eleven, parks and playgrounds, Chapter four seventy-three, use regulations, sections four seventy-three oh three, traffic.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so I wanted to talk about this bill briefly. Basically, during this pandemic, I think we've definitely all seen an increase need for our parks to be not only open for people to enjoy, but also to enjoy freely through walking, biking, biking. And we want to get away from any, any thought that a park is going to be a car-centric place. So reducing the speed from twenty-five miles per hour to fifteen is the right thing to do. People want it, people have been asking for this. And, you know, it's a great opportunity right now to do this, especially since we're continuing to, to see, you know, the, the effects of the pandemic. And, and it's just, it's a great opportunity to, to really talk about, you know, the speed that the people are going on our streets. And to highlight that the speed should be reduced. We're trying to do all these different traffic calming measures to make our streets, our neighborhood streets more friendly. And there's some, there's some facts about this that I want to get out there that right now our parks are, are, they're at twenty-five miles per hour. People feel, you know, people may feel the need or that they feel entitled that they can go faster than that and that they, we really can't enforce until thirty-five. So that puts us into a tricky situation where there could be a situation that is unsafe. There is a stat out there that, you know, when a pedestrian is struck at thirty-one miles per hour, that half the time, so if you're walking across the street with your loved one, one of you are going to be in a serious, you're going to occur, you're going to incur a serious injury. So with that stat, by reducing it to fifteen, you know, it's, it's the right thing to do. It's a safe thing to do and people want it.
I had to, I raised my hand for, just saying.
Thank you. So Councilman Wilson, I, I have to get into the record that the people in the Highland Park Reservoir Drive Committee, Planning Committee, worked with DOMI for, and D P W Director Casey and Director Ricks for over a year. And were asked, told me to do the research for this code change. So that, you know, I just want to acknowledge because we spent a year working very, very closely with the directors of the previous administration to advocate for changing the speed limit at Reservoir Drive to fifteen miles an hour. They said they would look into it, they felt maybe they could do it, they did the, the research. I'm not sure how it got to your desk, but I, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor. So, but I really need to give those citizens credit for their vociferous, consistent, tenacious advocacy for this code change. And we have been talking about it for many years at the table. Councilwoman Smith has been asking for the, to do the research for the authority. What authority did the city have to lower speed limits beneath twenty-five miles an hour? And really kind of has been a great champion for this cause. And just as a reminder, Reservoir Drive is a loop, it's a very wide right-of-way. So those conflicts you're talking about, people are trying to walk, people drive there from other neighborhoods because it is such a beautiful destination, major city amenity. You also represent one of the rad parks. But it's a closed loop and it has exercise stations along the way and it's got a bike lanes. People are, there's a lot of competition. Some people are biking slowly, they might be on tricycles, or other people are biking fast and people are walking. But then again, as a ride-wide right-of-way, cars try to go very fast around as well. Since it's a one-way closed loop, they're trying to get back out of the park that way. And so it's part of the plan for that reservoir drive. DOMI promised us, came back and said, we're able to do this change and we'll be painting fifteen miles an hour in big white paint down the middle of the street. And we have other design changes that we're making as well. There's going to be crosswalks and bump outs where there's frequent traffic. This is the site that everybody knows as the super playground. So the, you know, it's a destination park for little kids as well. And so I just needed to give, make sure that they got the credit where the credit is due. And, but also just a notice, since I've talked about Reservoir Drive, that what also happened was that the funding finally got put into place to reconstruct a historic bridge. And so D P W is trying to close Reservoir Drive to cars in order to reconstruct that little, it's a little, you know, one of those kind of stone. You, you, you don't experience it as a bridge when you're really walking or driving on Reservoir Drive, but there's a little walking trail under it to connect, so you don't have to cross the street. The stones have been dismantled for years now. And they're finally, the funding is a place to historically restore this beautiful feature of the park. So unfortunately, we're trying to negotiate with both D P W so that they can do their work safely, but also with DOMI to try to keep some car access because it's very important for ADA access to the park shelters and other park features. So that we're, we're trying to navigate those waters, just a heads up to the public though. So, but if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Wilson, if I'm added as a co-sponsor and I'm, I'm really happy to see this come to fruition.
You, any further discussion?
Me again. Thank you. I just want to, I was going to remark and say that, first of all, thank you, Councilman Wilson. I'd like to be added as a sponsor too. And I did work on the speed limit issues and Councilwoman Gross, you did a tremendous amount of work on this and, and I, I know that it came through, I believe it was through Bike Pittsburgh and there was some question as to whether who was working on it, who was cheering what committee. But it's, quite frankly, it's the way women are treated around here. I think that Councilwoman worked on this for a very long time and a little bit of review of the records would have showed that, that to anybody and they could have, should have had a conversation with both of you so that wouldn't put the two of you in a, in an awkward situation. But I do want to thank Councilman Wilson for immediately offering to work with the, the women on council and to address this issue. And I think he, that's, that's what he does. He, he's really good at getting things done and really good at collaborating and working with people. So I want to thank you, Councilman Wilson, for, for how you handle everything here and especially for getting this done because one of the reasons I was interested in this is because Grandview Avenue, it, half of the roadway is considered park. And we have a lot of issues with speeding on there and I didn't want to see a lot of the speed bumps that they have on there. I think they're, I, I think Grandview deserves a little bit better aesthetics than speed bumps on the middle of it. And this would have addressed that issue. And so now hopefully this slows down people on Grandview and, and then it slows them on the streets coming off of Grandview because they're slowed already. So I think that it will have a benefit for Mount Washington and Duquesne Heights and, and that area. But, but we have looked into city council. I want to be clear, the reason we're able to change this because it is in parks because the question is that we cannot change, or the, we've heard over the time is that we cannot change the speed limit, that's a state function for the, for our roads. However, we can do it for parks. So, so because Grandview is part park, they'll benefit. So thank you very much for your work and thank you for allowing me to be added as a sponsor.
Thank you, second round, Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman Gross and thank you, President Cal Smith. I just want to, you know, start off by saying that, look, I'm just trying to get it done. You know what I mean? Like, we're in a time, and, and we have to work with all partners, you know? Bike Pittsburgh are great advocates, you know, like, and there, I got a bit, you know? People like to push back on this, there's cold feet, but we need to take a stand and say that, you know, that the parks are for people that are on foot, on a, on a bicycle. They're not to speed through at all. So, you know, whenever, when I see something and when I hear, there's, there's a, when I see something that's wrong and I see an avenue where we could correct it, I want to put it on the table and get it done. So I did a couple of things here. I got. Um, I got, it's gone from twenty-five to fifteen, but also um, we're taking away Park and Parks and Recreation Director um, in this, in this language in forty-four seven three point oh three A, uh, basically in our, in our traffic code, um, you know, previously it allowed Parks and Rec to designate posted signs, so I'm changing that to uh DOMI Director. And, you know, to your, to your point, um, President, about uh changing the speed and how we can do it. And that's where, now I really rely on um the expertise of people in my office to, to work on this. We work through these issues, we're working with law, uh, working with uh DOMI. And so we're really just trying to get this done, so not trying to um stir the pot at all, so.
No, I know you're doing it.
Yeah, 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 so you can rely on me to, to get this, get this going and get it done. I'm happy to do it. And so, you know, I mean, like, so, you know, one aspect of this is that the actual studies for these roads will um be done by DOMI. So even though, you know, we say fifteen, there are going to be roads, like there's three primary roads uh that, that could be, um, you know, that could be uh changed, so they don't have to be fifteen. And DOMI will determine that. So, um, but you know, it's correct, you know, people in Highland Park want it, people at River View Park want it. Um, my, my, I have to drive through Highland Park to um to drop off my, my kids, their grandparents. And uh some of those turns are quite sharp, so be able to reduce that would be great. River View Park, there is no sidewalk for the cyclists, uh, just like other uh, you know, areas that have that loop in the city. And it's, you know, could, could be a dangerous situation, so we reduce the speed. Um, it's going to be an important thing, so, oh, thank you. Thank everyone.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bill is recommended. That takes us to Innovation Performance Asset Management Committee chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger, one deferred paper, bill sixty-three.
Bill sixty-three, resolution amending resolution five hundred of twenty-twenty, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Finance to enter into a maintenance agreement with OPEC Corporation for maintenance services related to the Falcon Red Document Scanning Workstation by exercising the option to extend the terms of the agreement for one year at a cost not to exceed ten thousand seven hundred and ten dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second. Question, Councilwoman?
Motion to amend, you should have the amendments in front of you.
Second.
This is really just a correction from the Department of Finance, um, from last week's version of the bill.
All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any, bill is amended, any further discussion on the bill as amended? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bill is recommended. That takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. Our first deferred paper is bill forty-four.
Bill forty-four, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for forty-eight oh eight Bond Boulevard in the Eighth Ward.
Motion to hold four weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it will be held four weeks. That takes us to our last bill, bill fifty-nine.
Bill fifty-nine, resolution amending resolution four seventy that originally authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to enter into a corporation agreement with the Port Authority of Allegheny County, Allegheny County and the U R A concerning the Bus Rapid Transit Project to now, through an amendment to the aforementioned corporation agreement, authorize appropriation of an amount not to exceed twelve million eight hundred thousand dollars for use in the Bus Rapid Transit Project and to authorize certain property transfers, easements, vacations, dedications, and right-of-ways encroachments with the Port Authority of Allegheny County necessary for completion of the Bus Rapid Transit Project.
Motion to approve discussion.
Second.
Uh, so I asked the Director Lucas to join us, he's on camera. So um, I appreciate Director being here. And I just, we've had a long meeting, so I don't know how many um questions council members have, but I just wanted to give um a kind of more um detail and description for the public here about what's happening. First of all, because it's twelve million, twelve point eight million dollars, nearly thirteen million dollars. We talked a lot today about making choices and setting priorities. Um, so first I'd like to get a little bit of background about the money director. That, what are the sources of funds here in our, and again, I believe we're reading it right, that this bill commits, um, city councils committing those dollars to this project. And maybe you could talk a little bit about um the timeline. It doesn't say whether it's over time, is that writing a check today? Where's the source funds, maybe you could start there? Thank you. And you have to identify yourself again, please.
Sure. Kim Lucas, Acting Director for the City's Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. And I'm also joined by Steve Otterman, who is the project manager on the DOMI side for the BRT, the Bus Rapid Transit Project. So I want to start with pointing out that um this is a two hundred and thirty-five million dollar project. So two hundred and thirty-five million dollars worth of investment in our city connecting um to, connecting a corridor. We're of the bulk of our employment and other economic opportunities.
Actually, Director, we've had a very long meeting, if you could just answer the immediate questions, I think that would be helpful. So if you could talk about the twelve point eight million dollars, the sources of funds and um the timeframe over which that's committed, is that upfront right-of-way, um, or is that over time?
Some of those funds have already been committed by council and I will ask Steve, who has joined us, if he can um get into the specifics.
Yes, twelve point eight million dollars of CIP funding has been identified for council. Uh, and uh they will not be drawn upon until construction begins, which would be next year.
And when it say draw down, so it's CIP funding is, it, the bond was the source in our capital budget. So for the public to look at, when there are capital dollars, they're usually identified by the source, like other CDBG bonds, Pago.
Uh, those are listed in the cooperation agreement. Um, I'm pulling up that table now.
Thank you.
Give me one second.
That's fine. Um, and then I'll just let you know that the second question I'm going to have is that, again, for the public and in our legislative record, what we have attached to this legislation is um a bunch of charts that are property parcels. And I was hoping, um, and Director, I apologize if I didn't ask you this directly in advance. I think I communicated it to O M B a couple of weeks ago that I thought it would be more helpful to have, um, again, not to, to draw out the conversation, but it would be easier to have these kind of like maybe on a map. Um, it doesn't even have, it, it does have street addresses, but there's a variety of parcels that are listed, really several pages of parcels. Some of them will just be right-of-way, like we're just leasing. Some of them are actually acquiring or there's some ownership transfer. And it's hard to digest, frankly, in the chart form, so that, that'll be my next question. I'm just giving you a heads up. Can we, um, do we have answers about the sources of funds?
Yes, uh, in the cooperation agreement, uh, section twenty-seven lists the source of funds, they are all CIP bond sources um from budget year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. Um, those are uh bond sources. Uh, and those would not be utilized until the, the project um construction begins. And as we know, since these are from several budget years, they will be um used over time. The construction period for the project is, is expected to be several years. Um, so this timing works out well.
So, uh, we already borrowed the money and when the city borrows or floats a bond to end people, you know, buy the bonds and then we get the cash, we're committing to specific projects for those specific bonds generally. Just about ninety, ninety-five percent of the funds of a bond issuance have to be used for the exact projects that you proposed. So these, these funds are tied to that, to this use. And I just wanted to make that clear, did I say that correctly in your understanding? Or do we not have the right process, do we have O M B at the table perhaps?
I think it will be best answer that question.
Uh, you know, I'm not, I, I, I have held this before just because we went, uh, we had a power failure last week. So I don't, I don't mean to hold you up anymore, I just think that this is a substantial amount of money. It is a substantial infrastructure project that we first started talking about when I was in my first year on council, which was twenty-fourteen. And um that was a much different day. We were also under the impression that we were going to be getting federal funds for this project. And, and to my knowledge, those have not materialized yet. Um, and so what is, what I see here is a county port authority project. Yes, it will benefit city neighborhoods, yes, we've had extensive conversations about it. But we have, um, we seem to be shouldering the costs in a way that was not the first, it was in, in a much, much different ratio, a different percentage of bearing the cost than was first proposed to council. Um, I think I have that right. I don't think, I don't think I'm misrepresenting that, that project. So I just really wanted to spend some time to, to draw the public's attention to it. Um, and to just put it out there that while we all agreed and approved the bond issuance several years ago to commit these dollars to this project for these years, maybe we're in a different world right now, right? And so maybe we should put this in perspective when we're moving forward. And if we're talking about sources of funds for infrastructure, bond issuances for infrastructure, um, this now looks to be personally uh in a much different context of priorities. So I just wanted to say that, and can we just quickly, and we've been here a long time, so um, I did see, I think another member of the administration come into the room and I have to awkwardly turn around. Mr. Frank, do you have anything to add? Do you want me to bring you to the table? That's okay, that's okay. Just to, just to talk into the camera because I know that people at home can't see. So um, I'll just leave that the way it is, you know, I'm, I'm expecting we'll approve this today. But if I could just, again, not to keep us here much longer, but um, direct, direct, does anyone on the Zoom um from the administration also can speak to the properties that are um in our legislation and for members of the public? Exhibit A, Exhibit B, Exhibits, I think C and D, it's hard to look at. Got double-sided papers, yeah, C and D.
Yes, this is, this is Steve Otterman from Department of Mobility and Construction. Yes, the parcels that are listed in the agreement uh are required to uh, to construct the project. There are uh several private properties, but also many U R A owned properties and county-owned properties where what we call sliver takes, they're very small, uh shallow, narrow uh pieces of land adjacent to the public right-of-way that are required in order to construct the BRT station structures. Those are each identified by parcel ID. Uh, our design team does have those mapped and drawn. So if you need to see a, a map of that, I'm sure we could provide it. Uh, these would be uh small pieces of property that the Port Authority would plan to uh take and then dedicate to the city as public right-of-way. So adding to the sidewalk and adding to the street in order to construct the BRT stations.
Yeah, so yes, I actually will. So again, while I'm comfortable passing provisionally today, I would like there to be better attachments for our legislative record. Um, so in your exhibit A, B, C, D, it says, for example, as you, as you point out, it does have the Allegheny County Block and Lot Number. Those are very difficult then, you have to kind of, if you're at home, you have to pull up a different map or even me in my office, right, then I have to go to a different place to try to type in the block of lot numbers to locate it on a map. It's burdensome. And so if you already have a map, I think you should give it to us and I can amend on Tuesday, just to add it to the record. And then secondly, the legislative language says that voting yes today and Tuesday on this bill, this council is authorizing property transfers, easements, vacations, dedications, rights-of-way. I don't like that kind of language, I never liked that kind of language. I call it carte blanche language, right? Just giving you this kind of like, take this blank card, like a blank hall pass and just run away with it. Um, you have the attachments, which is great, but it does not identify in your, in your attachment and in this, this matrix that are the attachments. It doesn't say which ones are owned by whom. So you know it because you've just said it, but your attachments for the legislation do not reflect what you know. So there's, there, it doesn't anywhere say who owns the parcel currently um and, and where the ownership is maybe going from and then to. So it, it's kind of like shorthand here. It just says what kind of type of property rights, it says required utility easement, et cetera. But I don't like that where, I might actually amend this by Tuesday too, to like restrict these authorizations to the requested parcels that you've attached. Right, and so they're going to need a little more detail and I'm, I'm happy to work with you there. I've done this before, it's a pattern with me. When the administration sends over language that is really broad, um, I like to constrain it to the actual request that's being made, so. Um, it does a really, that's all I wanted to, to kind of highlight for conversation. We've held it before, Councilwoman, so I know if we, if I can just get an assurance that we can just kind of clarify these things for Tuesday. I, I'm comfortable in passing provisionally, but that's all I have now, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the bill is recommended. That does exhaust our agenda for today. We have meeting announcements this afternoon, shortly after this meeting. Council will hold a cable cast post agenda discussion on police traffic stops. Next week, council will hold our regular and standing committee meetings on Tuesday, February twenty-second and Wednesday, February twenty-third, respectively. Both meetings will be held at ten AM. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by nine AM the morning of said meeting. You may also call the city clerk's office at four one two two five five two one three eight. Are there any other announcements from members, council president?
I just really want to, uh, real briefly let members know that I received a thank you from the Old Stone Tavern people, thanking all of you for recognizing them and for their, um, for, for paying attention and keeping up with the Old Stone Tavern. So they really, I want you to know, my district appreciates you. And then um also for the social security offset, we received several um emails, uh, phone conversations, text messages from employees across the city of Pittsburgh, both union and non-union who wanted to thank us for making sure that we did away with the social security offset. So I wanted to let members know that um there is a lot of appreciation for, for the work you do, so thank you.
Thank you, anything else from members? If not, motion to approve the minutes and agenda meeting.
I'm a second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are adjourned.